All right, I will call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton, Pingley Wiggly, and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Thank you. Can I get approval of the agenda? So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed in? Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, discussion of possible action on the Junction Pub LLC application for a Class B retail license, fermented malt beverage, and a Class B retail license intoxicated liquor.
Jeremy Paulson and Sean Walters of Junction Pub LLC have applied for a Class B fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor license for 130 Merchant Row. They are in the process of purchasing the business and property at 130 Merchant Row. Depending on the issue date for this, the malt beverage license will be prorated for the fees. This police department has completed the satisfactory background check for all members of the LLC, and staff does not have any concerns at this point for issuing of the liquor license. Censors an existing liquor license at the property, the previous one will need to be surrendered before the new one is issued, and that can be done at the same time.
If those requesting the license are present, if you want to say anything, you can. Don't need to, but... Okay. Okay, is there any discussion, any questions? Or motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the Class B fermented malt beverage, Class B retail license, and intoxicating liquor.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congrats. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding a final plat for Tower Hill.
Next Generation Construction LLC has submitted a final plat to subdivide 14.61 acres of land into 30 lots and one outlot for stormwater management. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the requirements of Chapter 42 Land Division of City Ordinance, as well as the city comprehensive plan. The property is owned R2, which permits single-family homes. Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 10, and 12 are indicated as duplex lots. Duplexes are allowed with issuance of a conditional use permit, and the developer would be applying for a conditional use permit at a future date. The proposed plat is an infill development and eliminates deadened roadways with construction of extensions of East Ash Lane, East Evergreen Lane, and Red Hawk Drive. There's no proposed parkland dedication on this site, therefore, the developer is required to make a payment in lieu of dedication as required by Chapter 42 Land Division of City Ordinance. The plat requires installation of new sewer and water facilities to serve the development. The proposed outlot will provide the stormwater management, and the plat has also been reviewed by Baxter and Woodman. The Plan Commission reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan and the conformance with the preliminary plat at its meeting earlier this evening. The recommended motion requires the developer enter into a residential development agreement with the City of Milton before the final plat can be recorded and before development can commence. There's no fiscal impact to the city for the construction of the proposed subdivision. The land is privately owned and being subdivided by the owner. Once development of the lots occurs and the construction has been completed, the city will recognize new taxable value commensurate with the value of the homes on the improved lots. Seth is here from the engineering firm that's working for Next Generation, if there's questions. And city administration recommends approval of the Tower Hill final plat with the following conditions being to review and approval by the Public Works Committee, as well as approval of a residential development agreement by the Milton Common Council.
All right, is there any questions, discussion?
I just want to say that I attended the Plan Commission meeting, and there were some very nice, good things that were brought up that, as far as the duplexes go, that we'll look into later. But I, with that, I just want to make a motion to approve the Tower Hill final plat with the conditions to review and approve a Public Works Committee and approval of residential development agreement by the Milton City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2024-527 restricting parking to 20 minutes in identified parking stall on Merchant Row.
Common Council directed staff to develop an ordinance to provide for 20-minute parking in two stalls on Merchant Row. This ordinance that we created will restrict parking in the first and second parking stalls on the east side of Merchant Row, starting 220 feet south of the south curb line of Crandall Street to 20 minutes. There is no fiscal impact to this ordinance, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2024-527. Just a reminder to the council, enactment of an ordinance requires a first, second, and third reading, and then a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time the first reading is completed.
Okay, is there any discussion? And I will just remind everyone, if you can speak into your mic clearly, we're having trouble hearing on the online version of this city council meeting. Or a motion?
I discussed this quite a bit last time we were here, so let's go ahead and make the motion to approve ordinance 2024-527, waiving the second and third reading and adopting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2024-528, short-term rentals.
The Community Development Authority requested, in addition to our ordinances, regulating short-term rentals. While the CDA was inquiring about the possibility of implementing a room tax in the future, our attorney suggested we would first need a way to track the rentals. This ordinance provides for licensing of short-term rentals such as Airbnb, VRBO, and self-run rentals, as well as insurance that state licensing and insurance are in place. The common council should set a fee to offset any potential staff's time in reviewing applications and issuing licenses. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2024-528 and setting the license fee at $25. And again, enactment of ordinances do require first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. However counsel prefers, they can waive the second and third reading and adopt it the same as time as the first reading.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or motion?
I, I just have a question. I know that we brought this, this was brought up years back. And I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to this. I just feel like we probably need to give our residents a time to get the news, ask us questions, before we follow through completely with this tonight. I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
Does anyone have a figure of how many VRBOs we might have in Milton right now?
That is one of the reasons for the ordinance is to help identify which ones. Through a cursory search on the website of VRBO and Airbnb, I have not been able to identify any of them. So this is definitely a future-looking ordinance rather than something that will affect people currently.
Okay.
Is there a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Vanessa.
Linda, uh, we're looking at having a factoring date on the ordinance. He is, did have those on a couple of agendas. As a agenda for Nona, I'm not aware of any feedback that anybody on CDA has had regarding that. I don't know if staff has any feedback on it, none of these ones, or it's a powerful meeting. So, I'm afraid you weren't thinking about having kind of a question being, Linda, to have a question in mind.
Well, I was actually just thinking that we were going to have our paper here tonight, and they might put something in the Gazette that we were talking about this. Sorry. Is that better? I was just thinking that it would, it would be nice for the residents to maybe read it in the paper and think about it, give us some information. But our newspaper gal isn't here tonight, so I don't know if that works. Oh, yes.
I have a question, I guess, of them as well. I was looking at the ordinance, and it talks about the ordinance license period is from July 1st of each year to June 30th. So would this go into effect then July 1st, thus building a little bit of time in?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Park, that that could be an option, adopting it as of July 1st.
I was just curious.
That would give you the buffer that you're speaking of, Linda.
Unless there's an intent to try, attempt to try to collect it for this licensed year.
Yeah, you're correct, that if it passed it as is, it would go into effect upon publication, and then it would, if anybody wanted to do it this, prior to June 30th, then they could do that per this ordinance. So that would be, then after that, it would go into effect then from July 1st to June 30th, similar to alcohol licensing.
That was our intention too, was to have it run concurrent with alcohol licensing, just so we could issue our licenses at that time.
How are you in, what are you thinking, Linda, how are you envisioning that? Like communication? You wanted to go out to the city, or?
I was just thinking that it would go out in the, in the media for, as a result of this meeting that we were discussing.
So what you're looking at is just...
...put it in a newsletter that goes out from Waterville? Newsletter?
I...
The next newsletter would go out in May.
So, maybe, so Linda, are you looking to maybe approve the first reading but not waive the second and third, instead bring it back for a second reading? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. That's what I was looking for, but if you all don't think that, if you don't think that it's necessary, if you think that we have enough information out there, I mean, I don't want to be the only one saying anything.
I really think the impacts are minimal. We don't know anybody who's going to be reporting it at this point. And as far as the general public is concerned, it's probably good for them. At this point, we don't even know. And there may be rental units out there. We're collecting information that I think is valuable for decision-making, and it really won't have an impact on anybody other than those that would decide to, to create a rental unit.
And I would say at $25 is a pretty negligible amount as well.
I think it's cost recovery, as that was what we discussed at CDA.
Linda, is there additional information that you want that staff, you were cutting from staff, and they haven't provided, or is there additional information for lunch or...?
Oh, no, I'm not looking for any additional information, and I think that we've done a very good job of giving us the information. I was just thinking that because it was something that involves our residents, that if we, if we give it some time, then people have the opportunity to come back to us and say, "Well, I think I don't want that in my neighborhood." You know, those people are out there too.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-528, waiving the second and third reading and adopting.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, presentation on Rock County housing crisis.
Thank you, and I think Jenny is going to set things up on the screen here for you. And I did give you a handout. If anybody is interested in a handout to follow along, there are a couple more copies up here that are available. Just quickly explain where this came from. The Rock County Board has allocated some money, some ARPA money, for affordable housing. And I am on the Rock County Housing Authority, and started to study the issue a little bit because frankly, I didn't know enough. And that knowledge is, I think, pretty important to us here in Milton. And housing has been on the lips of a lot of folks. We've had city council candidates that have mentioned housing as one of the issues. At virtually every meeting of the city council, we talk about housing. And I asked that the Housing Authority be able to do a presentation for the county board. And since I was doing that, I offered to do just a slightly modified version for Milton. So I would jump right into it. You're probably going to know more about housing than you want to by the time we get to the end. I'm sure this isn't the first time you've heard "housing crisis" used, but for a lot of people, the crisis isn't an obvious one. If I've got a decent roof over my head, then it's somebody else's crisis, not mine. I'd like to suggest that there is, in fact, a crisis, and that it affects all of us. Next slide. The housing crisis in Rock County didn't start with the pandemic. We assumed that that was what happened. In fact, it's been with us for about 20 years. Next slide. Oh, you're already there, I think. Rock County, like most areas of the country, experienced a housing boom in the early 2000s. That was followed by a bust. So that early 2000s, there were a lot of new units being built throughout the US. In Rock County, it was particularly traumatic in that we had both the recession and then the closure of the GM plant. And there were many developments that were planted and out there, and suddenly, they were just empty land and stayed that way for a long time. Rock County has been slow in catching up to that. Next slide. Between 2006 and 2019, the number of households moving into Rock County exceeded the number of new housing units built by 1,000. So we're talking about 1,000 deficit in housing units in a relatively short period of time. And next slide will just show you kind of a graphic of that. Housing units increased 1,954 in that period, number of households, 2,954. You know, you start to ask, where did all these people go? You know, where are these people living? And, you know, we'll get to that in terms of some social service impacts of the housing crisis later on. But a lot of people doubling up, a lot of recidivism in terms of adult children moving back in with mom and dad, a lot of sofa surfing, a lot of homeless that Rock County has been plagued with. The housing picture has been improving, but it hasn't been up to the level to overcome things. In the recent years, we've seen about 100 more units built than the influx of new, new households. Next slide. There are a couple of, couple of factors here. One is availability, and just click on that, Jenny, and you'll get there. If you click again, all right, availability. The second one is affordability. Click again. As far as availability, part of the housing crisis is the fact that we've just mentioned. Supply hasn't been keeping up with demand. And predictably, what that results in is higher costs. As you've got not enough supply to meet demand, the supply that you do have is priced higher and higher. And that's increased the, or decreased housing options, both for buyers and for renters. Let's talk about the affordability piece for a minute. Affordability is kind of defined by housing and urban development. They use a scale that is kind of indexed to areas of the country. They recognize Wisconsin's not San Francisco or Boston, and consequently, they do regionalize that. A household is considered cost-burdened if it has to spend more than 30% of its total gross income on housing. Now think for a minute and apply that to your own circumstance. Kind of in your mind, get your gross income for your household, multiply that by 30%. My guess is that most of us are well under that 30% number. And can imagine that if you're spending 30% on those housing kinds of needs, that can be your mortgage payment, but it also includes utility payments and those other things that go along with that. So you're cost burdened, whether you own a house or whether you rent. You're cost burdened if you're spending over 30% on housing. You're severely cost burdened if you expend more than 50% of your income on housing. And imagine that, put that one into your mind as far as household income, and take half of that and think about spending half of your income on housing. You're going to find out in Rock County, there are a lot of people that fall into that category. Next one, I think. The 30% rule applies to both renters and to those seeking to buy homes. Mortgage lenders often use that 30% target in conversations with people in determining how much is affordable in the way of a mortgage. About 22% of Wisconsin homeowners are cost burdened. So this isn't just a rental thing. 22% of homeowners cost burdened in Wisconsin. 43% of our rental households are cost burdened. That means over 30%. If we go to looking at the owner occupied and rental units, it's an important kind of a number. There are approximately 71,000, this is 2022 data, 71,287 housing units. That's single-family homes, it's duplexes, counting each unit in the duplexes, one. Multi-family dwellings, counting each unit as one, a little over 70,000 units. About 22,000 of those are rental units, or were rental units in 2022. It's different where you go in Rock County, and there's a graph there, so, yeah, there you go. This just compares Beloit, Janesville, and the rest of Rock County. When you look at Rock County, the Rock County bar, that's not all of Rock County. That's Rock County except for Janesville and Beloit, because that's the way the housing authorities work in Rock County. That Beloit has its own housing authority, Janesville has its own housing authority. The rest of Rock County would include all of the townships and Milton and Edgerton and Orfordville and so on. As you can see, if you're in Beloit, 41% or 41.9% is rental in Beloit. In Rock County, it's about 10% less. So it's more common for owner occupied units where we live and in most of Rock County. Rock County's housing crisis isn't just a rental crisis. I've said that a couple of times. It really affects all income levels in every area of the county. And here are some of the things that the housing crisis impacts. And again, just push there. Homeownership, the rental market, we've talked about those two. But a couple more, workforce recruitment, it has an impact there. And then lastly, it has an impact on social service costs. And that's a really important one that we, I think, forget about. Terms of homeownership, Wisconsin Realtors Association reported in 2010, median sale price of a home in Rock County was about $100,000. By the time we get to 2020, that's gone from $100,000 to $185,000 as the average sale. In 2022, it spiked, and it was almost $250,000 as the average cost of a sale in Rock County. Since then, it's backed off a little bit. But as Paul can tell you, the market is pretty hot for looking for a home, because he's been out there doing that with crowds for every housing unit or every home for sale that's there. The dollar sign has dropped back a little bit, due in part to interest rates going up. But remember, that 30% rule applies to kind of all-in costs on housing. So if your mortgage price went up, it's not just the cost of buying that home that's involved, it's also those other costs that are involved. During that same period of time, that we were talking about it going from essentially $100,000 to close to $250,000, the household income also did increase, but it increased at a much slower rate. So we went from about $47,000 up to about $70,000. There's a graph that will be shown here in just a second. And if you click again, there's the graph. And if you click again, there's the graph. The upper line is the housing costs. The bottom one is the median income. And as you can see, the gap is getting bigger. So the gap between the amount of money I make and what it costs to buy a house is changing. In 2024, kind of the result of that is the traditional middle-class aspiration of owning your own home is becoming an unattainable dream for a lot of families. In 2000, 71.1% of the housing stock in Rock County was owner occupied. That percentage is now closer to 68%. So less homeowner occupied housing in Rock County. Move on to kind of connecting some of these pieces. The lack of affordable housing places more pressure on the rental market as those who are in the past might have purchased homes are renting instead. So we have more competition for rental properties because of the fact that homeownership is getting more expensive. So it's all interrelated, it's all connected. Well, what about the rental market and affordability? I mentioned earlier, we've got 71,287 housing units. About 21,000 of those are rental units. And here are the figures for the city of Milton. Jenny had provided some numbers that Paul Moser, our assessor, had provided. His most recent numbers are approximately 2,451 housing units. So that compares to that 71,000 we were talking about countywide. 1,729 of those are owner occupied units. Or were at the time that he was doing his work last. About 722 rental units. So that kind of gives you the proportionate figure of rentals versus owner occupied. If we look at the cost burdened thing that I mentioned before, the 30% and the severely cost burdened 50%, if we look at that for Rock County, what we find is, and I don't have the stuff specifically for Milton on that one, but if we look at Rock County, we've got over 9,000 households in Rock County fall into that cost burden category of spending more than 30% of their income on housing. 21% of Rock County renter households are severely cost burdened. So we've got essentially 4,500 families or households. And a household can be a single individual, it can be, you know, a married couple. It can be a family of six. I mean, households are defined in different ways. But 4,500 households are in the situation of spending over 50% of their income or their total income on housing. Who's most severely impacted by this? And the answer to that is low-income housing or households. Not surprisingly, I guess you'd figure that. But what does low income mean? And I'm just going to take a minute to go through that. Who are Rock County's low-income residents? I think you're going to be a little bit surprised when we get to what that looks like in total. Housing costs and household incomes vary. Mention HUD adjusts the dollar amounts in terms of median incomes. So we'll put it back into that framework that we're not talking about household incomes on the coasts, we're talking about Wisconsin. There are three separate household income categories that are tracked. First one is low income. The second one is very low income. And the third one is extremely low income. These are official categories that HUD uses. On this chart, I've got the median income at $89,200, 80% median at $71,360, 50% median at $44,600, and 30% median at $26,760. That one varies by size of household. So a smaller household has got a different number than this. But we're going to use a household of four for our purposes. Did something pop up there? Hit it again, and I think, okay. The categories in between there. If you're between $44,600 and $71,360, you're considered to be low income. If you're between $26,760 and $44,600, then you fall into that very low income category. If you're below $26,760, you're going to be considered extremely low income. So those are the three categories that get used. What's the impact? What's the real impact on families? There was a gap report that was put out in 2023. It used 2,000 census data. It used housing and urban development data and so on. And it identified that of the, there were 4,485 extremely low-income households. Remember, we had a very similar number before, 4,500. So the numbers seem to track well here. Forty eight, 4,000 or 4,485 extremely low-income housing. For every 100 households that fall into that extremely low-income category, there are only 54 affordable units available in Rock County. 54 that fell into the category of I can really get into a decent place to live for less than 30% of my income. However, the situation is even worse when we consider that a lot of those units are already occupied. In other words, if I fall into the low-income category and I can find a place that I can rent for 20% of my income, I'm going to grab that. And what happens is there's downward pressure. By the time you get to the bottom, most of that housing is already occupied. And so we find that only 23 units were both affordable and available for people that fell into that extremely low-income category. So people are making choices, they're rational choices, and we can't complain when somebody says, I've got a great deal on a place to rent. But in fact, it's putting more and more pressure at the low end of the category. Well, who are these people? Who's our, this extremely low income? And this is the one that surprised me when I started to read about it. 30% of the extremely low-income households include at least one senior citizen. So 30%, so almost a third, includes somebody who's a senior. And the numbers that I'm giving here aren't repeated. So you only can fit into, a household can only fit into one category. So if you're a senior, you don't qualify even if there's somebody who's disabled. 18% of the households include at least one person with a disability who's not a senior. Okay, so look at it in that way. So we're up to roughly half, 48%, being seniors or people who are disabled who fall into that extremely low-income category. 35% of the extremely low-income households include someone who's actively in the workforce. So, you know, this isn't the welfare queen kind of story. We're talking about people who are working, but they're working poor. They're making money, they have a job, they're just not making enough to pay for the housing that they're living in. And here's the chart that breaks down 30% for seniors, 18% for disabled, that 35% for working, and then there's 17% that fall into other kinds of categories. So we've got a group of people that fall into that severely low income who are pretty needy in terms of their life circumstances. In summary, and I'm glad, I'm sure you're glad to hear those words, in summary, rental summary is that a Rock County household with a gross income of about $72,000, that's that 80% of median income, can probably find a rental unit. And we've got figures for Milton on this one. But in Rock County, if you make $72,000, there are about 98 units for every 100 households looking. So that's sort of the level. When you get to that level, you'll probably find a decent place to live. A Rock County household with a gross income of $45,000, and remember our low income, very low income, and extremely low income, Rock County household with a gross income of $45,000 is going to have a much harder time. The numbers are 66 units available for every 100 that are looking. And if you get down to that category of $27,000, that extremely low income, you face an almost impossible task. You're looking at 23 units being available for every 100 households that fall into the category. The next chart kind of shows you that gap with median income being kind of an okay market, very low income more challenging, and the extremely low income being a pretty desperate kind of a situation. And move on to the final issues here. We hear a lot about workforce housing. And in fact, what started me down this path of doing some research on housing was the fact that the county set aside some of their ARPA money for workforce housing. Workforce housing isn't meeting the need of those very low-income folks that I was talking about, but it helps the general market. Remember that deficit of 1,000 units over that extended period of time. We need housing, and we need housing almost of any kind. We don't need a lot of housing at the really high end, but we need a lot of housing in the middle, and we need a lot of housing at the lower income scales. There is a little bit of a trickle-down effect. If we build enough of the workforce housing, that's going to make the market a little bit easier down below, but it's not going to solve all the problems by any means. Workhouse, workforce housing has got a definition that's a little bit different than those other income categories. It generally is between 60% and 120% of whatever is the median income. And the median income in the area is around $83,000 at this point. That's a 2023 figure, so it's an updated one. So what we're talking about 60 to 120% is families that have got incomes between $53,500 and $107,000. So that's the range that covers the 60% to 120% of the median income. A four-person household with an income of 60% of the median, that $53,500, enters the cost burden territory if they have to spend over $1,300 on housing. So $1,300 is sort of the threshold where, and this is workforce. These aren't the super poor people we were talking about before. These are people with, you know, decent-paying jobs and so on. But at the low end of the scale, $53,500 for a household income. About $1,300 starts to put them over that cost burdened territory. A four-person household with an income of 80% of median, so that's about $71,000, enters the cost burden territory if they have to expend about $1,750. And remember again, this is housing, including, you know, rent, all utilities and other costs associated with housing. You can see that, you know, these numbers aren't bad. These exceed, you know, well exceed median rental rates in Rock County.
I assume those numbers, the $1,300 and the $1,750 is per month?
Yes. I'm sorry, I should have, yeah, I should have clarified that. The 13, yeah, those numbers are kind of all-in costs, including rental and utilities for a month. We need workforce housing. You know, it's a very, very important and desperate need. We know how important economic development is. We know that the city kind of lives and dies on growth as far as state funding is concerned and that net new construction rises to the surface and says, you don't have net new construction, you're going to be looking for services to cut. So we need workforce housing for a couple of reasons. If we can build housing, that's new tax base. If we can bring businesses in, that's additional tax base. And to do that, to attract those businesses, we need workforce housing as well. Potential business investors want their employees to be able to live close to the workplace. If there's a real dearth, there's going to be a problem attracting employees simply because the cost of commuting is significant. And you weigh that in. If I'm driving 60 miles to work every day and 60 miles back, I start to factor that into how much am I being paid? So it's better if we can locate people close by. Final thing I wanted to bring up was kind of the social service costs. The social service costs associated with housing crisis really are significant, although a lot of them seem to be pretty hidden. We don't see them every day. But that sofa surfing I mentioned before, the doubling up, the moving back in, the homeless shelters. We're expending public dollars on homeless shelters and on transitional housing. We're paying for housing vouchers. We're putting homeless families in hotels with public money in Rock County. This is not, you know, talking about Chicago. We're talking about Rock County here, where housing vouchers are being paid for so that people have a roof over their head. The crisis results in mental health needs. If we look at other social ills, you know, domestic violence also is kind of an outcome that comes from these kinds of situations. Originally put the presentation together for the Rock County Board, but municipalities have a whole lot more to do with housing than the county does. The county unusually has the SARPA funds that are being spent on housing. Normally, the dollars that we've got to work for, work with are far more modest than that. We do have an opportunity in Milton to have an impact. And, you know, we've got development that we've dealt with tonight in terms of approving. That development is really important. We're in the process of new zoning ordinances. Those can be extremely important. Things like density of building are important. Whether or not a municipality allows so-called mother-in-law apartments or mother-in-law housing on the same lot is another issue. There are a whole host of issues that relate to zoning that can create a more favorable environment. We've got a couple of examples in Wisconsin of tiny homes that are being built for veterans in communities. We couldn't do that under the current zoning framework that we've got in Milton, even if it was a great idea and the funding was available. So we need to look at those kinds of things. We need to look at both the incentives that we can provide and the creative things that we might do to find solutions to the housing crisis. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you for putting that together.
That's amazing.
You know, a member of my book group that looks at American biographies, I'm going to quote Leanne Glorvigan at our last meeting. She said, I've been depressed ever since I got in this book group. And the reason is that, you know, we've been, you know, raising a whole lot of issues. This is an issue that's kind of depressing, but at the same time, it has a whole lot of opportunities. There's a lot of upside here for Milton really becoming a leader in the area of affordable housing, workforce housing, and building something that's sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It was very informative.
It was very informative.
Okay, moving on then to agenda item number eleven. Discussion and possible action regarding the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride on WISDOT bid.
So this is the annual purchase of salt for next winter, which I'm sure we're all excited about hearing about. Similar to previous years, we enter into the salt bid with other municipalities in Rock County through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Last year, the amount purchased by Milton was, or the amount that we requested was two hundred tons and the contracted price equal approximately seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We're proposing the same amount this year for the coming winter season. So we're just recommending approving the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride on the WISDOT bid.
So I guess I have a question because I feel like we had a lighter winter. So did we blow through all that salt or?
No, we haven't. We have, uh, on, on the attachments, you can see the overall capacity that we have and then the amount that we have in inventory. So we have a heavy inventory that we've carried the last couple of seasons due to the light winters, but that being said, we don't want to reduce our purchase to, you know, substantially less and then, you know, potentially have an issue with acquiring salt if we do have a winter with more snow events than we have the, the two recent winters we've had, so.
Thank you. Can you talk briefly about salt versus other treatment? Because I know we do use the liquid.
Yeah, so we use Liquid Brian as well. That's, um, that's for, during specific applications. We can use it as kind of a preventative, anti-icing. There's a group. There is a group that works with, through the Rock River Stormwater Group called Saltwise that provides a lot of training for staff that we've taken advantage of to reduce our salt usage per, per snow event and looking at other application methods and trying to increase the alternative such as Brian.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion or motion? I'll make a motion to approve the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride on WISDOT bid.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item twelve, presentation of annual municipal separate storm sewers MS four permit.
So annually, we have to prepare a permit for the DNR indicating our compliance efforts with our MS four stormwater permit. The, the draft report is attached. We're just required to present this to the public. There's no action required. If there are any questions, I'd gladly try to answer them.
Does this report go out for a public to see?
It's, yes, it's in the meeting tonight and it's included for, you know, public viewing with the agenda packet. So we don't, it's not, it's not like mailed to residences or anything like that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Since we don't need action, we'll move on to number thirteen. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman to provide planning assistance to Milton Junction area.
After a recent public hearing, council requested the city look into the cost of studying the Milton Junction area for traffic and stormwater management. Residents in the area between Madison Avenue, John Paul Road, Vernal Avenue and Merchant Row have had concerns about stormwater management and traffic flow. Currently, the city does have little in the way of stormwater facilities in that area and little to no data on traffic. Baxter and Woodman would conduct a traffic flow analysis and stormwater analysis. For the fiscal impact, the cost of the study is ten thousand, three hundred and twenty with an optional cost of thirteen-hundred to forty-five-hundred for traffic counters, depending on how many are deployed. I will let the council know that this is an unbudgeted item. Staff ask for guidance regarding this work order.
So if I don't budget it, this comes out of contingency then or?
That would be correct.
I think that this is a great opportunity for us and I am very happy that we're looking into this. I will make a motion to approve this work order and ask staff to bring back more detailed information to the council.
After, after it's completed or? Before we?
We need a second first to discuss it, don't we? I have a question.
Second. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion?
Yeah, Linda, I'm just confused by your comment. You want, you want the results of the survey, correct? Yeah, okay. Do we get to decide how many are deployed? Like, will we?
Absolutely.
So this, um, in the, in the work order, there's a portion that discusses final product.
Yeah.
They would provide exhibits for review and a summary report indicating their findings. You know, this will not be improvements. It would just be a plan to consider, you know, what next steps may be necessary.
Okay, no further comments, questions. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding application for Cargill Local Community Grant.
About six months ago, Cargill reached out to myself and other staff to discuss the options about their local grant program. Primarily, it's been focused on agriculture in this area and they would like to expand their reach. So this is a national program, but it is managed by the local employees. After looking at different options within the city, they did send the information that the Lamar Park improvements, so that would be the playground equipment that was completed, would be a good option. So this is an invite-only process, so no one else can just go ahead and fill out a grant application. We have, the city of Milton has been invited for this. So now that we are at that grant process, then staff is requesting direction from the city council to see if you are interested in having staff complete this application.
I would move that we seek the grant.
Say aye. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number fifteen, discussion and possible action to authorize the appointment of additional election officials for January twenty-twenty-four through December twenty-twenty-five election cycle.
So since this election cycle is a little busy, we are always looking for additional election officials. And Charlotte, who has been an election official in the past, has asked, requested to be an election official for two thousand twenty-four to the two thousand twenty-five election cycle. Based on scheduling, we are always, again, looking for more. So staff recommends approving this appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action on agreements with University of Wisconsin's university program.
This agreement that was reviewed by council at our last meeting has been updated to reflect the changes recommended by council and our attorney. After review from the University of Wisconsin, they have requested changes in the payment schedule. Rather than payment due at the end of the project, they would like to see a fifty percent paid at the execution of this agreement, twenty-five percent paid at a reasonable set number of days after the execution of this agreement as determined by council, and twenty-five percent at the end of the project timeline. The second document attached is the memorandum of understanding of the expectations for the students helping in the project that council or our attorney had no changes to make. For fiscal impact, the council did approve twenty-five thousand in funding for residual funds from the two thousand twenty-three budget. The city's cost for the university city project has been reduced to twenty thousand dollars in this contract. And for a recommended motion, staff recommends approving the agreement and memorandum of understanding with the University of Wisconsin and setting the second payment at fifty-two days after execution of this agreement. And that is the last day of University of Wisconsin's spring semester.
I have move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number seventeen, discussion and possible action regarding May-mow-May.
Okay, a little history on May-mow-May. So in the spring of two thousand twenty-two, the city hall staff received quite a few requests of if we were going to be participating in not allowing mowing within the city during the month of May. So in February two thousand twenty-three, we brought it back to discuss with council and they decided to, and I believe it was Teresa, decided with the name of, of May-mow-May, where they, the council directed staff to not issue violation notices until June fifth. And so that was the Monday after the end of May. And now that we are in two thousand twenty-four and as we are approaching that time again, staff would like direction on what we would like to do for this year.
Any comments or a motion?
I, I think this is a great way of handling it. You know, the questions we got when suddenly no-mow-May showed up was, you know, do we have to not mow? Can I mow my lawn and that kind of thing? And the, the May-mow-May was, it's, if you don't want to mow, we're not going to issue a citation for the month of May. So you may not mow if you don't want to, but you may mow if you do want to. So I think this is a great way of handling it.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, the city of Milton does a May-mow-May in two thousand twenty-three, four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, moving on to general items, we will start with committee reports. Historic preservation meets tomorrow. Any others?
I think the chief is out in the lobby.
And we'll get to them for, for staff.
Staff, right.
So I will talk about parks and rec. I'm not going to wait for Mark on that. That's, so, thank you so much on that. Did work out a leasing agreement, going to be leasing out space on the outfield fences for signage. Working with the, the baseball teams. Disc golf signs, some pretty neat intuitives, some great graphics going to be placed in our disc golf course. Gives you instructions and lays out the course and you can scan it with your phone and high-tech there. Lamar Park Pavilion is going to be painted to match the others. Pretty cool, red, black, white. And then lastly, the new sign for Lamar Park, the Jim Morden Field Sign, the quote was approved and we'll start creating that sign and it'll be installed, so. That was pretty much it. It was big. I'm surprised you weren't there, but. Okay, so now we'll go to staff reports. Who wants to start? Okay.
I don't have anything. Eric was gonna, Eric talked about parks, that's what I was going to talk about tonight, so.
Thank you. Good.
I have a question for Mark. When are we going to start lawn pickup, yard waste pickup?
I don't recall this exact date. It's in the newsletter. Kelsey's helping me. We'll come back to that one.
So moving on to Kelsey.
Um, I don't really have too much of an update. The audit field work was completed the first week in March. It went well. They're doing all of their background information now and we'll have final audit once they have it ready. We have been working through interviews for our seasonal crew position for three spots, so we're slowly working through. We have eight applicants right now. We do have that job posting still open. And then our police officer job posting closed on Friday and I won't steal all of Chief's thunder if he wants to update on it, but we did have seventeen applications in the end, so.
Awesome.
That's a lot more than last time.
Excuse me for chief?
I meant last time.
Whoa, whoa, too soon.
Sorry, man.
We'll go with Paul then, next.
Lots of development projects coming through the door. Just really, really excited. It's going to be a busy, busy summer of building here, in this summer. And then Jenny, Mark and I have been working on the zoning project and reviewing zoning code. We've had a really good meeting on Monday and anticipate a few more this week until we meet with the people from Vanderwall again. And finally, developing the surveys for the strategic plan. So things are going well.
Awesome. Kenny?
Okay, I have a few things. So just as a reminder, the annual community picnic is scheduled for May ninth and it'll be held in North Gridrich Park. As part of the event, we do have community awards that are given away and those are based on nominations. So the nomination form is available on the website or you can submit a written, written nomination and drop it off at city hall, mail it, fax it, whatever you would prefer. So those nominations are open until April fifth to allow time for creating those awards. And then spring election and presidential preference vote. So that's scheduled for Tuesday, April second. So we are getting a little close now with that in-person absentee voting started today. So we had a total of nine people that came in and so our administrative assistants, Ashley and Kaylee, have been working hard on that, making sure everybody has all of that information as they're coming in. So as of today, we have a total of two hundred and eleven absentee ballots that have been issued by mail. That is including the nine that came in today. And then we will have some from the Milton Senior Living that we will be issuing. So that will be next week that will be going out there. And so the in-office absentee voting does continue until Friday, March twenty-ninth and city hall will be up until five P.M. to accommodate those voters. Then earlier this month, I submitted the art grant for the interpretive sign project. So that's been an ongoing project for the last couple of years, putting it, putting it together. And that is a collaboration between Parks and Recreation Commission and Historic Preservation Commission. Both have expressed support for the project. At this point, we are waiting to see if we've been awarded it. It is a very competitive grant and it is national, so we should hear some information in May. There are other options for grants out there for this type of project. So if not, then staff will recommend some different options to Historic Preservation Commission to discuss for future. And then I have one other thing that I think is kind of exciting. Mark and I met and with Paul Smith, Ashley Rogers, our administrative assistant, with the DNR about a tree grant that we received from, and so that's for, this year is federal money. So this goes along with the Alliant Energy Tree Grant that we received earlier this year. So that's pretty exciting, at least lots of tree stuff. And the focus of this tree grant through the DNR is actually going to be coordinating a tree inventory and then also education outreach for trees.
Ashley?
Uh, we currently have fifteen baby chicks at the library. They all hatched last week and they will be here through next Friday. We do have a live stream going on YouTube right now. Tomorrow officially starts the school district of Milton's art show. So we have art throughout the library from all schools. So come take a look at all the amazing work. We will be hosting a solar eclipse party on Monday, April eighth during the solar eclipse from about one to two-thirty. We'll have snacks, crafts and solar eclipse classes. And we'll be starting an MPD read, storytime. And we'll be starting an M P D Reed Storytime the first Friday of each month. One of our police officers will be coming and be a small craft as well.
Awesome. Chief?
Hopefully that craft will involve safety scissors for our sake. Kelsey only stole a portion of my thunder. Like she said, seventeen applicants for the position of police officer. Of those seventeen, eleven have been invited. I've had eight confirmed responses for next Tuesday's testing interview session and then from there we'll make a recommendation for those to advance to the final police commission interview. Update with our fleet. We finally got our second fleet or unit from two thousand twenty-three back up, so that should be on the road this weekend. And a little bit ahead of schedule, the squad that was supposed to be ordered for two thousand twenty-four is being built next month, so much sooner than anticipated. So we might be sitting on that just so we're not kicking out three squads simultaneously and accruing the same mileage across the board. So it'll be built probably by, in order to go by June, but we might just be sitting on it for a little bit longer till it hits the street. Other than that, no real change with inventory or staff or fleet or issues on our side of the building.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment real quick. Chief over there had to respond to an issue last week. And I'm sure you all are aware of it and I just heard a lot of good things from the community and from other staff members on how well they responded. And I just want to say some praise in public for Chief Saxi and his crew.
Yes, thank you.
Are you able to talk?
Yard waste is the, starts the first week of April and the yard waste will start the first week of April.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Council has a copy of our March report, which is for activity in the month of February, which seems like a long time ago after the last two weeks. Hundred and seventy-one calls across the entire district. This is kind of exciting because starting with February, we now have year-over-year statistics for east and west. So you'll start to see those as we have that data. During the month of February itself, we had four structure fires. If that sounds highly unusual, it is. We average about two or three in a given year. Right below those four, by the way, none of those were in the City of Milton, so you're, you're okay. Right below that, the average response time across all four of those structure fires was seven minutes and five seconds. Again, we track ourselves pretty closely on how long it takes to get. If you drop down the City of Milton for the month of February, there were fifty-seven calls, nine-one-one calls in the city. Total for the year now is a hundred and seven. Average response time in the city, five minutes and forty-two seconds. And what we're noticing, if you kind of put it in perspective, I don't know if it's a weighted number of calls on the eastern side of the city. So Janesville Street, Saint Mary's, right over on this side, which is a little bit longer, right, to get across from the current station. Obviously, the reason why we're aiming for two stations, one east and one west. So I think when we get that eastern station open, obviously that number comes way down. Staffing is in good shape. The Grow Our Own philosophy that we've been working on over the last couple of years, as we have people come and go and they do leave for various reasons. We've got backfill behind them, so we're not in a situation where we don't have full crews at both stations. On the backside, I was kind of chuckle. The only thing anybody really looks at is the bottom right-hand corner. That number's green. So we're doing okay budget-wise after two months. Significant activities, number one, it started out with a tornado in February, which I think everybody realizes is just plain unusual. The month got better from there. We did have a pretty substantial house fire in the town of Albion. We pulled up, there was flames out of all four sides of the building. It spread very rapidly. It was a very windy morning. Father and son were inside the house at the time the fire broke out. They both were able to get out safely, so. And then that was followed by Vicoplastics out and also in the town of Albion. Interesting thing about Vicoplastics, we've used that as kind of a teaching moment for not only our own staff, but we've shared it with the departments around Rockdale and Jefferson County. We, I mean, we worked those crews unbelievably hard for five hours on what if you looked at it, you'd go, it's a waste, right? I mean, the building's going to the ground. You know, nothing we're gonna do to stop, you know, stop a fire in an industrial building that size. Call came in at two twenty, two twenty A M. Just for point of reference. That isn't kind of the way we work. And in the end, the firm is a injection molding firm. So the molding machines are generic machines. It is the dies and the molds that go in the machine that that make the specific parts that they make. They were able to recover about ninety percent of all of their molds, which is amazing. And so the gentleman, he wants to rebuild. That's good, right? So we don't lose jobs in the community and all that kind of stuff. His industry partners are helping him get a couple of used molding machines and some other places in the, in the town have offered him space to put him in, to get him back up in production. And, and so, you know, share with our guys, yeah, I mean, we worked you really hard for five hours on what everybody would have defined as a losing effort, right? When you looked at it, if you saw any of the pictures, the amount of smoke coming out of that building was amazing. It was not. I, I mean, we're gonna help him get back up in business and, and running again. So I just use that as an example with our team who thinks every once in a while, you know, why are we doing all this? Why are we working that hard? Couple of other smaller fires, a garage fire in Fulton and then there was another garage fire on Minogue Road. That was an attached garage. Crews and, and Chief Parker, Jeremy, you know, pretty well. He was the incident commander. They got that knocked down before it penetrated into the house, which is exactly what you want to do, is try to contain it before it gets someplace. And they did just a phenomenal job on that one. Obviously, everybody probably saw the news. We had, had another one last night out at Snuffy's. Spent some time with the owners. They are seriously trying to get back up and running as quickly as they can. And they want to do that by April. I think that'll be very interesting because it was pretty substantial damage. Started on the outside of the building and the wind, again, playing kind of a big effect, drove the fire up and into the attic. And many of you know the building. It's an older building. It had been remodeled several times over the last fifty, seventy years. So the crew that got in there and started to try to get up to the fire in the attic, we'd get through one ceiling and then there was another one. And we'd get through the second ceiling and then there was a third one. So it took a while to get to the seat of the fire and, and therefore the fire had a good chance to pretty much do a lot of damage in the attic. But they are, we're meeting with the investigators from the insurance company tomorrow. We do think we know exactly what caused it, not suspicious. And, but we'll play that out and make sure we confirm that. By the way, we have three ambulances on the road right now, so. Yeah. And mutual aid to Cambridge. So anyway, I, I, you know, I, I think the owners are still kind of in the shock phase. Bar was open, patrons were there. They did a nice job getting everybody out. Nobody was injured. Everybody was okay. None of our firefighters got injured. You just hate to see an iconic kind of business like that suffer, especially going into the spring and summer season, which is their, but again, they're, we're gonna try to get them back up and running. Couple of interesting things to make you aware of. There's a note here under activities, the very bottom one about the City of Madison Fire Department. If somebody stealing ideas is any kind of compliment, we got paid a really huge compliment. We've talked about our Grow Our Own program, the cadet program we've got going with the high schools now, the student intern program. City of Madison, who you would normally think, you know, they put out a job opening and, and they'll have three hundred people apply. Not the case anymore, right? Every, all of us are struggling. City of Madison is now starting an intern program, which is pretty amazing. That, you know, we've been doing it for a long time. It's been helping us and so I think that one's kind of interesting. Couple of things I wanted to point out. For those that have been following along on the stations project, we got, we got our pre-approval from USDA, which is, I, I love it because you actually have to apply to ask whether or not you can apply. Kind of a cool process. We did get approval from USDA. We do qualify for USDA funding. And so actually, the state representative from USDA is meeting with us tomorrow and we're gonna be starting the application process for the funding towards the fire stations. So that's very, very positive. Two percent dues audit, all kind of good things. And the other one we just kind of chuckle about, we had actually been working with the National Weather Service back in December and early January to schedule a tornado and severe weather spotting class and we offered to host it in Edgerton. We cannot take credit for then scheduling the tornado ahead of the class. But tomorrow night, National Weather Service is gonna be in town and we're gonna be hosting a class on spotting, so. Questions, anything? Got a lot going on. Appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Very much. And I'll go relieve Brandon from telephone duty.
Mayor, do you have anything that you wanted to, you or the small child in your lap wants to say? Okay, thank you. Okay. I was gonna let you off too. Okay, so team building. If, if you could visit any fictional place, what would it be? If you could visit any fictional place, what would it be? Like a place from a book or a place from movie? Go ahead, Charlotte.
Stars Hollow, Stars Hollow, Gilmore Girls.
I'm going to Hogwarts.
Oh, I just. I was gonna say the secret garden.
Okay, I'll go. The, I don't know the planet's name, but in Avatar, that planet, that all the crazy, yeah, I think that's beautiful. You get to play too, Ken.
I would go to the offices of Dunder Mifflin.
Should've said Washington, D C. It's kind of unreal.
Okay, who hasn't went? Ken said Atlantis. Hobbiton. Hobbiton. Hobbiton from Lord of the Rings in, in Oenover.
I would go with anything from The Walking Dead. Walking Dead, sure. That sounds fun. Any, any street, any town, any zombies in the area, yeah.
Land of Oz.
Doc Brown's workshop.
Kelsey, Teresa Hall, right?
No, I'm still lost on the secret garden because I loved that book growing up. Okay. So I can't think of anything else.
You can pick that too. You can double up. You both can go to the garden together.
I'll say Narnia.
Okay, Kelsey.
We have Jenny too. Don't forget her.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Under the Sea from Little Mermaid. The castle.
Now Kelsey needs to go.
And now it's Kelsey's turn.
All right, Kelsey.
These guys next to me are encouraging me to say cheers, although I don't know what that is. We'll move on, so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, that wasn't supposed to be so challenging. Our next meeting date, Wednesday, April third, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. See you later. Bye.